It is seven. I will call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners on Tuesday, July 9th. Yeah. And so, that's probably our last board number, but the board may not be ready by voice of physically present board members, any commissioner wishing to attend remotely, but we do not have any remote attendance today. And so then, this is very normal. I would accept a motion to accept the agenda, but it will be a change.
Staffs recommend that we move the executive session for the executive minutes for item 11 to begin, so that we come after the public hearing.
I move that we amend the agenda for item 11 after the public hearing.
Move and seconded. I will do a roll call vote. Start with Roger.
Aye.
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 Has moved and seconded and approved, passed, so we will move that up in the agenda. And so with that being said, I will note that executive sessions are closed meetings and are held subject to the restrictions of the Open Meetings Act. And so then, I guess at this point, I will accept a motion to move into the executive session.
I think we're in the middle of the public hearing.
Right.
Just for that.
Gotcha. Okay, so then we'll move on to just record three, which is the public hearing ordinance 2024-05 FY2024-2025 Combined Budget and Appropriation. So first state law, a public hearing on the proposed budget and appropriation must be held prior to adopting the ordinance. Notice of the public hearing was made in a newspaper advertisement. The combined budget and appropriation ordinance has been available at the Darius E. Fetus Administration Building on the UPD website for public review for at least 30 days prior to the hearing. So at this point, I will open the public hearing on the proposed and published UPD budget and appropriation ordinance. And I will recognize any member of the public that wishes to make a statement, but I will note that those comments will be limited to three minutes. So is there any member of the public who would like to make a statement during the public hearing regarding this FY24-25 Combined Budget and Appropriation Ordinance? Seeing none, I will declare the hearing closed, and we will continue moving forward. So at this point, I will also, we'll move into regular public comments. Any member of the public may make a brief statement at this time. Is there any public that is here to make a statement? All right, seeing none, then we'll move into new staff introductions.
We've got a number of folks here. I think Janil's going to do our first introduction.
All right, thank you for having us here this evening. Definitely want to say thank you for building at the Coliseum and allowing us the opportunity to elevate some internal staff. Obviously, that was a blessing. We really appreciate that. We have today two-thirds of our building service worker team, Mariana and Jose. Come on up and have a seat if you'd like, but feel free to get yourself to the board and tell a little bit about what work you're doing and a little bit about yourself, whatever you'd like to say.
Welcome.
Hello, my name's Mariana from Brasil. This is my second season. I'm to work and start part-time when they open to getting a full-time for this position to, um, custody. I love to be part of this, this building to this corporation and, and I'll be happy to, to work in for Park District, Urbana, because I'm grown up in here. And I'm from Mexico too. And if you need, we can help you. We're just here to, to help you and everything you need and, um, I'd love to be here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jose. I'm from Brazil. I'm just about a year here, all around. Before this position, I worked at pool maintenance. I was there year-round. I was a part-timer there, but I worked full-time hours. I appreciate everybody that got me into this position. I really enjoy this job. I enjoy all the peers, everybody that works around here, really good facilities, really good employees. And yeah, just appreciate everybody for having me here. Thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just going to state real quick, we now have these two physicians plus Suzanne Keala, who's been with us for a couple of years. They're now called building service workers, and they work for recreation. Janil oversees them, and they'll be doing all the maintenance and cleaning and those kinds of things at all of our main facilities. This is a little bit of a change from when we had ESS, cleaning everything. Right now, we've got a little transition as we figure out the daily routines. We do have ESS still doing their cleaning in the evenings while we all get a system together. They've been very helpful with providing input on ways to make things as good as they can make them. But we're really excited to have this team together, so good things to come. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce to you Teagan Flowers as our new natural landscape technician. Teagan comes to us from Champagne Park District and Champagne County Forest Reserve. So she'll be working kind of, this is the hybrid position that supports Georgina Donahoe and Matt Bock in the regular landscaping and natural areas. So she started on the 24th of June. Been here two weeks, and we're happy to have her. She's fitting right in, so I'll remember, say a few words.
Hi, and again, Teagan Flowers, and I'm super excited to be here and super excited to work both in natural areas and the landscape portion of this amazing organization. I always drive through Urbana and be like, wow, that's really, really pretty. I love flower arrangements. I love natural areas too. I'm just super excited to learn more landscaping from Georgina and any type of restoration tips from Matt. And yeah, I'm just super excited to be here.
Great to have you.
Welcome to be here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Good evening. Now, we are, I think staff recommend that the board group move down the hall to the smaller executive room than the others could stay here until we're back.
Go ahead and move it on.
Sorry, moving on.
Set aside.
In accordance with Section 2, Part C, exception number 21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of a semi-annual review of executive session minutes.
Second.
Move and seconded. You all do a roll call vote. Start with Roger.
Aye.
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 Has passed, and so we are going to move to our next session. So I am recommending this regular board meeting. So I should read this now.
Well, we need a motion.
Yeah.
For G. We can do two motions, one for the release of the minutes and then one for the destruction of recordings.
So I move that we release part of the executive session minutes. The board has conducted a required semi-annual review of the unreleased minutes of past executive sessions and concluded the need for confidentiality still exists for all the unreleased portions of minutes except the following minutes or portions of minutes no longer require confidential treatment and can be made available for public inspection. The 1, 9, 24, 3, 19, 20, 24, and all that's Section 2 of 4, 9, 20, 24.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. The roll call vote. Start with Roger.
Aye.
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 Has passed.
One more motion.
Yep. Then I move to destroy recordings. The board has authorized the destruction of the following executive session recordings, 7, 12, 20, 22, and 12, 6, 20, 22.
Second. All right, move and seconded. Roll call vote. Start with Roger.
Aye.
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 Okay. So then, now, we're going to move back into normal. So, it's very green for the update reports. Those in the meetings. It was a nice, tough day session from the last one. It was, um...
Del Coleman, bar.
Yes.
Very interesting. Extremely interesting.
Yeah. All right, and so then, go ahead and move to the consent agenda. So all action and information items appearing below are considered routine before and shall be enacted by one motion. If a discussion is desired, the items shall be removed and discussed separately. Commissioners have had an opportunity to review these items prior to the board meeting. And then, I will go over everything that is on the consent agenda and ask if any commissioner requests that any of those items be discussed. So that's the approval of the minutes of the June 4th study session, approval of the minutes of the June 11th board meeting, our three monthly reports from administration pending operations in recreation, our action to accept the land with the report and give listed with gratitude, approval of the monthly pay accounts payable, and action on resolution 2024-08 entered into tenant lease agreement for 28 opening South Park District. Are there any commissioners that wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Move and seconded. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 And if that passes, that will move us forward to our regular reports. So I'll go back and go.
So much paper this month. Gosh, can you see it?
All right, so we'll begin with our revenue expenditure reports. This is the reports that show receipts or revenues and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, budget for the current period, and preliminary audited results for the two months that are ending on June 30th of 2024. Beginning with page one, labeled sum one, this is all funds excluding the capital improvements fund. Revenues for the period were $5,279,800. Noting here in revenues, the very first line is our property taxes, and on June 26th, we did receive our second distribution of tax monies. That was in the amount of just over $3.5 million, which puts us at 49% of our budget with those two contributions. And again, last year, that was only at 44.5%, so a little bit more, a little bit sooner this year. That's good news. Expenditures, $1,841,698. Again, this is, for expenditures, this is up dramatically over the last month, but it is down from the same period last year. So last year, we were down 4.5%, so good controls. This gives us a surplus after two months, meaning in excess of revenues over expenditures Page two, this is our capital improvement fund standalone, and revenues for the first two months were $132,000 and $123,000. And then expenditures, $415,547. This gives us deficit with expenditures over revenues of $282,624. Pretty status quo for this point of year. Sum three, page three, sum three, this is all funds district-wide. Here, we're just noting at the very bottom that ending fund balances for all funds collaboratively And then the remaining summary reports are individual fund reports for our three main working funds, which are general recreation and museum, and the last page reflecting our indoor pool UIAC fund. Questions on the reports? Okay. Moving to the second set of reports, this is the treasures report, and this is the amount of cash the district has on a single day, June 30th, 2024. Twenty-five funds are listed down the left-hand side, and where cash is invested is displayed across the top. And investments on this date total $14,000, whoop, that's a wrong number, $16,398,122. Page two at the top, this is where, these are all our interest-bearing accounts. Of that $16,398, total dollars on hand, $15,290,000 in investments at varying rates. Proud to say that we currently hold five CDs, all over 5%.
Great.
The bottom half of page two, this is the inter-fund loans activity. There was no new activity, noting that currently there's $100,000 between Rec and Indoor Pool, which is standard for this time of year. The school district has been built, so we should be receiving that money in the next week or two. They're pretty diligent and prompt about getting us paid up to date, so. And then page three, this is the last section of the treasures report, and this lists dispersments for the month of June. This reflects vendor payments that match the accounts payable in the consent agenda, and total dispersments of funds, which includes payroll as well as vendor, is $1,737,472. Just noting here that this June includes, well, for one thing, payroll is much larger because we've got all our summer staff coming on, so those numbers might look a little bit bigger than previous month. And then we also did pay our semi-annual interest on our bond every June, so $232,500 of that number is our interest payment. And so I present to you the treasures report for audit. I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Move and seconded. Roll call vote. Start with Roger.
Aye.
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 So we have accepted the treasures report for audit, and that's the capital budget reports.
Okay, so this is going to cover where I'm at. This is a lot of activity. So on the request of Laura Hastings, I did change my color for April to blue, and June is in pink. And again, I'm not sure that that helps you guys read the reports, but it certainly helps me in, when I'm parsing them out on these reports, and while doing so, I've got a correction on here, so. Anyway, we'll start with the 2019 A capital budget. During the month of, or for April, which is reflected in blue, there was $28,297 was expensed to Farnsworth for design number nine. This was using our park grant funds. Also, $18,617 was also expensed to Farnsworth for design number nine. It's obviously split between a couple of different buckets. This was using our general fund transfer. $39,902 expensed to MCS for IT number two, using the general funds. This is for Delphine Wellness Center to get IT going there. And then, one, excuse me, $1,435 expensed to MET, continuing testing, this is number nine, using the general fund transfer. Any to be tested, this is some of the slides.
Well, this is probably Health and Wellness Center. We have another contract, we've concrete testing. Let me keep down the initial poll, we haven't been done before yet.
Okay. Still within this budget, we're moving to June, the column for June now, and in this budget, we did receive $37,129 as reimbursement from our VCEO expenditures. And then down below, $83,695 was expensed for fitness equipment. That was using some bond money. $4,052 expensed to Farnsworth for Weaver Park planning, using bond monies. Over to the lower right, a total of $98,910, five different vendors there, all using the general fund transfer. It had door hardware, IT number three, testing number 10, the charging e-bout, art supplies for Binky to get going on, the sculptures she's doing inside her companies there, so. Next page, 2024, there was no April activity, but in May, there was a small expenditure, $203 for a plaque to honor our tributes. 2023, no activity for April. In May, a small expenditure for some construction crew supplies, some lumber there, and then technology. We're seeing part of a total bill, $7,290. This is for the Andrews Technology. I think we talked about this a couple of different times, the time and attendance system, Nova Time, but migrating that over to their next platform, which is UKG, so we needed to pay for the time clocks. The time clocks do not play well together, so we have to give you those.
I'm saying, do you mean June?
I do mean June.
Just checking.
He's awake. No, thank you, sorry about that. So Andrews Technology, yep. And then, let's see, 2022 budget, we have one April expenditure, $2,450. This was to GHR, and this was for design work for the Crystal Lake project, Lightning Project. And then for June expenses, we had, well, we did receive $55,431 from ITUP, and this is in relation to the Crystal Lake Broadway project. This is the other portion of Andrews Technology, $16,782. And then we did have $16,000 in expenditures to Blue G, and these were for the benches that were maybe in the park. Stunning. And then 2021 budget, this one is, I have it highlighted in pink, and it was actually an April expenditure, $2,190 to NSA, this was for our Hardscapes Evaluation, number six.
So you can just, like, see what's on.
Yes.
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 2020, we had one expenditure in April and one in June. The April was $53,931. Again, this is MCS, and this was part of our Security Campus Upgrading Project. And in June, we had $416 for payable to Fairgram, this was design number 4B. And last page of the capital budgets, 2019, a small April expenditure, $710 to ERA in this was in relation to design work, number three, on the UC Bridge. Other questions on capital budgets? Toss the ball over to Derek and Abby.
This is the, I think it's been typically starting with the most recent aerials we have. This is aerial ride-by-pick for a couple of weeks ago. So really good things to note from last month is all the pavings done pretty much around the entire site, other than what would be a sculpture pad, bike parking, and a bench pad, and then there's an entry here that they're going to do in a few weeks towards the end of the project to tie everything in. And then, so mainly since the last month, a lot of finishes, taping, drywall, painting. On the left is the hallway upstairs, and then this door would lead you to the elevated track. And then they've had on their polished concrete protection for the last few months, once they did it, so now they're starting to remove all the concrete protection on the first floor and then working on the finished flooring, that concrete finish look that we have basically in the room that we're sitting in right now. And this room is, or will be Corky's office. I can get a view out of his window. This is then moving in the hallway, this is a staff corridor, basically that goes into a couple more offices, and what would be the break room and like a small meeting room, similar to our resource room down the hall. This is the men's locker room. You can see the epoxy flooring. There's still, you know, obviously other finishing work that's getting done, lighting, plumbing fixtures, all that kind of, all those kind of items, but we're definitely in the home stretch right now.
It looks like an aggregate. Is it smooth?
So that's like what we have in the bathrooms here.
Oh, okay.
It's a different color, but it's that same kind of finish. It has a little red to it. And then probably what's most exciting in the last month, I think the last project, or last board meeting, the wood floors were delivered, but they had to stay in the facility to get conditioned to the space, temperature-wise and humidity. And so this is the process where they're finishing up installing the wood floor, and then here's looking from above after the sealant on the wood. So obviously, still, it needs to be striped for the game lines, and then they'll have another sealant coat on top of that, but it looks, I don't know.
You can't ruin that beautiful floor.
And so, there's another room with wood floor, and that's the group fitness room. And so this is the entry to the group fitness room here, and you can see how, this is the finished colors for the walls, and then the subfloor, they're getting ready to install the wood flooring. And this is basically, if you're standing at the door, looking out the windows, this is the corner of the building upstairs, and then the finished concealed wood floor. I'll note, you can see there's drop ceiling that still needs to go in. This was being left open until Farnsworth had a site visit last week to review basically all the mechanicals up above what will be covered up by the ceiling. And I talked to Farnsworth today, and that walkthrough went very well. They had no issues, so the ceiling, drop ceilings will start getting installed this week. And then I just kind of wanted, now that we're kind of in the home stretch, an update on where we're at with all of our contingencies. So as a reminder, we have a contingency that the Park District is holding outside of the construction contract, and that's what the board originally authorized and then re-upped, I feel like a year and a half ago, just to make sure we're covering ourselves for any unforeseen issues. And so where we're at, remaining on that is $98,426. So as the project wraps up, I'm sure there'll still be some more expenses coming out of this in the next month or so, but once we get a sign-off on the project, we'll be able to release this to other uses for, you know, health and wellness or, you know, other capital needs. And then within Core's contract, it's what's that, that GMP, that maximum price that was approved by the board, and within that GMP, they have contingencies for themselves during the course of the project. If there's a construction issue, they can pull from that contingency, and it just keeps reducing over the course of the project. And they also have a design contingency, so if there's something that was missed in the design process, they can pull from that pot to help cover that unforeseen issue. And so what's remaining in Core's amount is $95,000, and then in their design contingency, they still have $23,000. So the total funds that we have available just in contingencies is $217,411. And so, like I said, there's still going to be some more things coming up here as we close every... we close everything out, but we're in pretty good shape as far as the funds that we have on hand, and we protected at this point.
I have a question, and I might be jumping ahead because there's another agenda item. How does this relate to the Farnsworth each of that?
This is the more accurate update number.
In terms of what we have in terms of contingency?
Correct.
To pay for the new Farnsworth?
In addition to this, we do have some additional funds budgeted into owner-provided budget for services and equipment that were completed last month, like October, but as the pain management is number, we'll confuse it when the project wraps up, so.
But these funds would be, sorry.
No, I was just going to invite you to ask the same question. If the, if the, if the funds under Core go to Core, that's our money?
Yeah, we actually have this money in our, in our, in our, yeah.
They're all waiting for us?
Not even that. We have, we have the money. It's, but it's earmarked within future invoices that we may need to pay more out of contingency than we're going to have.
So this is actually our contingency?
This is both.
Yeah, the ninety eight thousand is basically like we're holding it. The ninety five and the twenty three thousand, they were holding it, but they can pull from it. So if we wrap up, then that's remaining, they're just not pulling, it's still ours. It's still our money. But we won't get billed for anything of that. It's, yeah.
It's a more efficient way to manage a project instead of coming back every single change order. Identify upfront money, and then decisions are made to access and keep the project moving.
If we had worked at the general contractor rather than the construction manager, those core numbers, we would never have seen in practice, any general contractor will have contingency within their project, you know, that they have available, kind of the factor that they're over in profit. And then what we always have is the assigned contingency that we'll award to assigned for any project, and that impressed, we don't assume as well, but we feel like that one's less likely to road in the near future. We don't have a whole lot of that.
Yeah, we have a pending, a changer that was just finalized, and I've already taken that out of that number, so that's, I mean, that's actually where we're at. That's a seven nine, not seven five, that's where we're at today.
Have the money, I think I'm, so Core has those, that ninety five and the twenty three, and their gross maximum price.
Yes, right.
If they needed twenty thousand more than that, they'll walk. Because that's a gross maximum price.
And in addition, we're holding the ninety eight forty two.
Correct.
So why are we paying things out of the ninety eight forty two versus the ninety five? What makes difference between what we have in UPG contingency versus the Core construction contingency?
We added something entirely new at this point, something that we need to build into that.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, a good example of that is the, the overhang above for the front door. Now I don't remember the word of it, but that wasn't in the GMP, that wasn't in their guaranteed price because we rejected that alternate. But since we wanted to add later a smaller version of that, that comes out of ours, that doesn't come out of Core's, you know, that doesn't augment. So it's stuff like that.
And one more, there's still the FFE budget, which is separate from these contingencies.
This is the, the?
Yeah, the helps buy equipment, fixtures and things, and so there's multiple budgets drawing different aspects out, but anything left over in the contingencies will come back to me. And I was just going to add, great project team, I think we've got very little surprises, you know, no major, you know, renews or, you know, disastrous type situations. It's all been very straightforward and, you know, a few adjustments along the way, so overall project is phenomenal in that respect.
Okay, goes to our next aerial. This is Keenan, grabbed this one, I think, a week ago or so, and so this is obviously the Prairie Play site, looking towards the south, southwest maybe a little bit, so the path here, the parking lots over in this area. Here's that main five to twelve structure, the climbing net, double zip line, two to five kid zone. There's a group swing and a spinner here, the music PlayStation, it's in this area, and then here's our bank of swings, which is very close to the exact location of where the swings were in the previous Prairie Play. And then some more ground level images, looking at the main play structure, and here's that climbing net, looking at the double zip line, and then what I've really enjoyed is these, the two to five little kid homes. I, I think they look really cool. I think they'll really get, the small kids really excited, especially some of the climbing caterpillars we have, Cozy Dome, and then there's a turtle that still needs to get placed in there as well, in this picture. Someone was telling me these look like Looney Tunes.
I know that on the foundation bus tour, they were making all kinds of comments about those homes.
Yeah, they're going to be, they're going to be hit.
Basically, I'm walking out there, I hear people talking, I feel like, I've never seen that, you know, like I haven't seen that anywhere. And, and then I heard one person say, you know, it's like a wall at their park, have you ever seen them? Man, park this, this stuff. And I slowed down as I walked. Right, walking.
And just kind of one thing to touch on, construction ongoing in our parks, if you get any questions or if you see anything. So I think it was over the winter, we had the intergovernmental agreement with the Sanitary District. They were wanting to put a path. This is University Avenue, we're kind of orienting ourselves, looking towards the west, it's the top. And so the path comes in and then goes along our park and heads up towards their facility, and then cuts over to get people to their main office. And so part of that agreement was where we could utilize some DCEO funding that remained from the previous Crystal Lake projects to widen the path from five to eight feet. And just an update that that work has started, and it's getting moving now. I think it has a completion date of September. I won't update until it's completed, and I'll just kind of show off some nice pictures at that point, but I just wanted to make you aware.
There's a large oak tree near the southwest corner of the park that we were concerned about, and we actually moved that away from that tree to try to limit root damage. While we were doing our Arbor Day event out there, Arbor Smith suggested it might be worthwhile to use some air spacing, just to see if there's any roots, structural roots that we're going to come in and find it with, and so he went well below the depth of excavation and found nothing of any concern, so we feel good about that tree.
What a great outcome to get one leg of the Hart's Order Trail done, working collaboratively, otherwise, you know, strictly a capital or grant perhaps, but wonderful to see that coming together.
Okay, that's all I have. Most of the other questions?
The drone image of the facility?
Of the, oh, Health and Wellness?
Another happy story I want to share with you all, as you go in the service drive, I'm sorry, the access drive, and then you take a left on the service drive, there's a tree that's having that corner right there, that went further south. Just blow your cursor, I got that one there. There's a gentleman who was part of a group of softball players that donated that tribute tree decades ago, and he couldn't tell from all the construction whether it was still there or not, and I assured him that it was, went out and took pictures of it this afternoon, so it's clearly thriving pretty well, so.
Wonderful.
It's a big job protecting trees in this job as well.
Nice to have trees on the site.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll turn over to Tim.
Starting out, in the summers, we'd like to hear our clapback stats, so we'll ask Corky for an update for the July update.
What a difference a month this, four temperatures makes. Last, last month was a little, this month, we kind of all were back in the same game. So again, twenty twenty three, our counter wasn't working for our passes very well or very accurately, so we had fourteen, one thousand four hundred and eleven membership scanned last year at this time. This year, we have four thousand eight hundred and twenty three. So again, after this year, we build a, be a little more accurate on those numbers, but that four thousand eight hundred and twenty three is accurate. Daily visitors, twenty, in twenty twenty three, we had eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety nine at this time. Right now, we have nineteen thousand one hundred and forty four. So one month was a good month, and we got back up there in our numbers. Revenue at the gate in twenty twenty three was one hundred and twenty two thousand two hundred and two. This year, one thousand twenty one, one hundred and twenty one thousand two hundred and sixty six. So difference is very narrow, but some of the reasoning for that is we have punch cards, so, you know, people are using cards versus they buy them and don't use them kind of thing. We also gave out some punch cards as promotional things for schools and that kind of stuff, so we do that every year, but just, you would think there's a few more visits, why are we a little off on money, but that's, that's the difference. So last year was a good summer, this year's, so far, turned out to be one as well.
It's very cool for the heat though.
Yeah.
Yes, it will.
It's been very fortunate, the pool's been up and running the entire summer, so.
That was highlighted in some recent, we talked, we were one of the only pools that has some of that issue, so that was the staff.
Some mechanicals.
That was mechanical issues.
Whatever, we had a little issue on the indoor pool ourselves, so I was grateful for working the pools. Okay. Not all good. I guess that.
Did you all see that, that same cold picture?
I did see that.
That old field?
Yeah.
That, like, that image just looked like AI.
And then, just a couple hours earlier, there was a bunch of little kids.
Moving along, just wanted to thank and compliment Ashley, whether she's completed her Services Chair for Up Deck and had a last meeting, and welcoming in our incoming Chair, Hannah Sheets, so really grateful for the, having diverse and just highly active Up Deck community that continue to attract. To move on, just a few more thanks and callouts, just a wonderful turnout for the huge event on June sixteenth at Crystal Lake Park, every two years, over two hundred and fifty people were coming to that issue, but it's a super great, hot day, a lot of turnout. At the Pride and Banner Road, we helped sponsor the food for the day, so everybody gets that for free, so just really pleased with that outcome. Also moving on, King Park, just want to thank Cedric Stratton for the excellent job he did at leaving ceremony for the peaceful verification. While the rest of the event was going on, a small group of people were over on the corner celebrating that. It really was wonderful. We had some special words, and just, just really heartfelt outcome, so we're happy. I think Janet reported about seven hundred and fifty people attending the January 1st day, so we had a good average turnout, things weren't really smooth, and enjoyed that time together. Moving on, at Crestview Park, for the Play Days in the Park on June twenty seventh, had over four hundred people at that play day, can imagine, in that simple park, and food, activities, Banner Road, all sponsors, so just wanted to say about that. Also, just wanted to compliment Andy Rousseau and Jamil Jones, excellent job they did. I'd ask if you do have a project report on the new Health and Wellness Center, I had a last couple of years ago, and each did an excellent job of construction, how it's coming together, what's to be expected, and Jamil covered all of the exciting programs. We had past sales ready to go right then, probably cleaned up at that year, so a lot of excitement, lots of people ready to move back to it. Just wanted to report on quarterly Metropolitan Youth and Wellness Committee, a meeting that we have, we moved to quarterly meetings throughout the years, or four year, featured the U of I Research Park, a lot of new things I didn't know, a lot of new incubator businesses coming in. Still would love to see if part of that developed in Banner someday, so we've known it. Just wanted to report back, we found out through CSR that the Excel Prep Special Ed School has potential space to expand out after school. So we're going to go visit over there and see if that would be an appropriate facility. They serve neurodivergent populations, autism based, but they have space. As you know, we have a waitlist, and we didn't have space enough, you know, support, so we've been moving on that, so I think our next meeting will visit there, most likely we'll start working with that and expanding opportunities there.
It wasn't just space, there was also people.
And people, staffing, and also, you know, aides as well, to make sure we have assistance at the unit. So assuming that all goes well, we'd be able to see some expansion there. Just wanted to mention, we had our KRT Pavilion Construction Kickoff Meeting, it went really well, all the partners working on that project, it would be fantastic, we would be starting that, so stay tuned for more good things. Just wanted to report on a new and different topic, had a chance to visit the home park district, to visit their Terra Trail system, sort of a compressed recycled plastic preborn paper product that they put together. Interesting to read, they've done a kind of a whole park movement system. I thought most movements start out with maybe a smaller opportunity, but they did get a couple of grants to be able to do that. I saw opportunities maybe in some temporary access paths, you know, for sports fields, any special events type of space that you might need to get somebody to a specific location, and if you did not lose concrete or asphalt or limestone screens, it's a much more stable and resistant, so it's just material, so well worth the trip and see what, how that product develops. Just wanted to again mention, we have a number of, we've, we've done collaborations now with the Park District. They've essentially agreed to sort of adopt the outreach and wellness department, their events and help funds to keep those events going, so we're pleased to report on that new collaboration. Few other updates, just wanted to report that a great turnout towards the, and a great time at the Urbana Parks Foundation bus trip, where we visited several of our new construction sites, really good turnout, we did have staff feedback, although we had expected and hoped for a lot more people to come, a smaller turnout, we think worked better for that kind of a tour, much more intimate, able to focus on the visitors, answer all their questions, sort of limit side discussions, you know, from going to get a large group, sometimes group can get away from, so something we definitely would like to repeat.
What was the turnout?
We had about twenty attending, and then all the staff towards other people, so there's about twenty seven, thirty three people, I think, just mentioned that. And again, I think you saw maybe a different event that might be done as a way to update and bring kind of a VIP tour, but it's fun to do, and I think we had a lot of excited, a lot of good questions. Just wanted to remind the board of some new theater. Productions are coming up with Oliver, July nineteenth, twentieth and twenty first, for Department Theater. Interested in attending any of the performances? Of Corky, no, and you can arrange tickets through your, up the attic, you can get a ticket. Should be a great production, very good things about it. Also, just wanted to remind folks that the Community Walk that we're doing with the Urbana School District is scheduled for Wednesday, August second, seven. The rain date is Thursday, August eighth, starting at seven PM. Our plan is to circle the neighborhood, drop off bags, promote back to school activities, and then begin our campaign for the Health and Wellness Facility. So a great time if you're available, would like to join. A lot of fun, it's a great opportunity to get out with neighbors, talk to a lot of people, so stay tuned, and we'll keep you posted.
We, I really think it was a tour, like a, an opening date?
We, no, I think for the Health and Wellness, we talked, it's getting closer, so what we're kind of imagining is maybe mid fall, soft openings, probably get more, there's a number of tight sets of things that have to happen, for example, interior bureaus, could take a couple of weeks. That has to be done after a lot of other work is done, so it's that, probably that scheduling game now to be able to be done. Then there's the punch, we must all of those, I think, could go famously well and kind of wrap up soon, so we're just trying to keep it flexible, we could open, and then plan together, and I've asked the foundation to work with the staff team on these openings, or a number of these, you know, Prairie Play, Health and Wellness Center, we've got the Jazz Walk coming up, the Sculpture. and the sculpture dedication. So we're gonna really do those events while in the days of the fall. So I can't be more specific right now, but as soon as we know, which we won't be angling toward that after we get the building. It also discusses that there's some VIP donor-based stuff to try to get done before we open. So that's probably the question of the hour of when we. I think that's all I had. You can answer any other questions.
Could I add in real quick?
Oh, yeah.
Community walk.
Yeah.
We're also, I've been working with the, we've been talking about it for many years about the students being able to bring their receipt from the school where they show that they qualify for either free or reduced student fees. And when they do that, we're working it out now to where all they need to do is bring that receipt into Phillips and then they will get a percentage based on whether it's free or reduced. So that'll eliminate one step where the parents won't have to bring in proof of income and all that kind of information. So gaining ground on that.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be all aware of that.
Schools can easily do that.
What's that?
And the schools can easily do that.
Yes, they, they've got receipts that they send out that each, each parent will receive that receipt that they get either free or reduced school fees. So they'll just have to bring that copy. If they don't have it, they can go to the school and get another copy.
Long time come. There's obviously some technology and sensitivity issues that we're not in a position to do that. And that's in addition to what you do, any sort of handout scholarships or scholarships via other ways.
Thinking about those things and the rest of that. Moving forward on that, associated with our recent discussions, so it's awesome.
Hopefully that sort of dovetails in that. I've been reporting for a few months now on the community based overall, the community to the facilities, starting with Dr. Williams School and the health and wellness as I can start and then moving on to King Park, hopefully comes soon.
So when the parent guardian, I have to redo what they are.
It was frustrating for parents.
Accessibility is like one of those things that, you know, we can think about it in like the physical sense, but it's just the same way of getting access to people later. Our facilities begin to get to that will be a bar, just like that, making it easier for people to register or get the benefits that we're offering. So I'm all for it.
Get the languages, you know, worked out too. That's another barrier challenge for us.
Right. Well, all right. And then we will continue moving forward. This is definitely the president's report on his behalf. I'll just note that there's no Up Deck meeting in July.
Yeah.
Just kidding. But then August sixth, board meeting, we'll be talking about the, I hope we will, Park Master Plan, August thirteenth, regular board meeting. And then August twenty-seventh, the next Up Deck meeting. And then that one should would be a fun one to be all of our new Up Deck members as well as our new chair. And then I don't have anything else to add in our regard. So then we'll switch over to the leads on the reports, starting with that finance study group, looks like Roger.
Yeah. We met June fourteenth. Probably the thing we talked most about was the Barnesworth proposed reconciliation fee. At that time, we thought we were gonna have to meet again on the twenty-seventh to, to come up with something to make it ready to present to the board. But the staff was so fantastic that they worked this out with Barnesworth, then we had something that would come forth. So that was good. We also talked about the rewrite Prairie Master Plan, about things that might be, that might have to be done, well, something that does have to be done at Prairie Play, Master Plan possibly.
The mayor, the policy study group.
We have not that.
Urbana Parks Foundation.
Met yesterday. We did have a forum, but not that much. Their community foundation capacity building grant that they were, that they were trying to get to help them in terms of getting better organized and everything was denied. So one of the, one of the compasses that was made is that they were actually, they've actually been too successful in already accumulating enough money that, that really these grants are mainly focused towards startup nonprofits. So we know you compete too successfully, but, but anyway, that, that's what was banded about, whether that's true or not, I don't know. And also, Kelsey talked about restructuring meetings to provide the educational component that, that will help the foundation better in terms of structuring, fundraising and planning things and that sort of thing. So that was it.
Thank you. And then Up Deck, my name is Cedric.
We have not that.
All right. Then we're moving on to old business, which there is. We'll see the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget books, which we have received.
We'll have that in the packet.
No, actually, I do have a little bit of a PowerPoint just to kind of talk about our budget process very briefly because the budget appropriations ordinance that you do have to take action on is really what feeds the document, the ultimate budget document. So again, this isn't like the pretty pictures that Andy has, but overall, again, this is just a walkthrough of our process and our budget cycle begins as early as November and December where staff is getting engaged and looking ahead and, and starting to plan for their next, you know, fiscal year. And it moves on down through the calendar, you know, in January it moves up to the department heads and in February it gets to the business office. Late March, early April, we're learning what our tax levy is going to be and finalizing that, which is the last little piece of information to give the board a preliminary, a high level overview of where we're headed with our, our budget process. And during, you know, April and May, we're finalizing, making revisions, getting the last pieces of input. And then in June, we have to, what we're currently doing, we have to put that in the newspaper and advertise it and make it available for thirty days or actual ordinance. And here we are today in July, doing all of the compliance things that we need to do along the way. So on the next slide, this is, oh wait, that was a big jump. What happened?
Oh, I missed.
Yeah, sure. We should do one of those. Six and three bridges in between. There we go. This, this line is just telling, you know, all of the things that really goes into creating that budget, you know, we're having to give to all these different sources and, you know, we're looking at tax information, we're looking at strategic plans and goals, we're looking at previous year experiential, we're looking at, you know, what are we expecting for current year revenues and expenditures? What is our debt service gonna be this year? We're finalizing contracts, commitments, we're doing everything we can to get any type of free money from local state and federal grants, whatever we can, you know, to be able to provide the, you know, most services and programs that we can to our, our peaks. So the next slide, implementing the budget, kind of what I just said, you know, really kind of starts with that budget appropriation ordinance, which is just listing all of the anticipated revenues and anticipated expenditures, appropriation, meaning, meaning that authority to spend. And that's, that's where our rules and compliance really lies, right there. And then at, you know, as we're going through a budget, you know, we're monitoring it throughout fiscal year. Staff is looking at things on a regular basis. The board's looking at it on a regular basis. We're doing that today. We do it every month. You know, we're looking at those reports, the treasures reports, the capital reports, the accounts payable reports, all of those things. We're keeping our finger on the pulse all the way through. And then at, at the end of every budget year, we're revising that budget if necessary. And that means, you know, we could be making changes to the transfers in between funds. It could be making changes to actual expenditures or appropriations. Does require a two-thirds vote and all, all things have to be filed at the county clerk's office by April thirtieth at the end of each fiscal year. So the next few slides are snippets out of our actual budget book that you guys had this evening. And just a very quicked highlight here, this slide is looking at revenues. As far as tax monies, you know, we're slated to get nine million five hundred and forty-four thousand. That is up five hundred and sixty-eight thousand over last year. That's about a six point three percent increase. So that, that's a good number. The R, the park district's tax rate did slide just a little bit down. It decreased from one point two seven eight four. You know what we all see on our tax bill, right? For the park district, it, it went down from one point two seven eight four to one point two six three oh. Fractions of cents, but everything matters for us, right? So there's nothing comparative here, but I can tell you that, you know, grants listed here is four million one twenty-one. You know, that number was way over eight million last year. So kind of hard to compare to last year. Last year was wild. Next slide, budget highlights. Here we're, we're looking at what the CPI is. We're at five percent again, and so that was two years back to back at five percent. Currently we're sitting at four three points four, I think. So we're thinking ahead on that one. Our box, box was advertised, our tax levy, which is our box, box was listed at twenty-nine point six percent. EAV was increased by eight point four percent, up to seven hundred and fifty-five, seven hundred and twenty-six. And then down below the graph is, or the chart table is just comparing what each fund received last fiscal year and what we're anticipating to receive during FY twenty-five. So we've already received, you know, two of those distributions. We usually get six, maybe sometimes seven, just depends on how the county gets it all.
Pretty hard to increase to the police fund.
Pretty hard to increase in what?
To the police fund.
Yeah. So let's talk about that for just a hot second because police fund, you know, it's a very limited, very narrow use fund. We've talked about this a little bit at a couple of other meetings, but so, you know, we only take about twenty-five thousand, you know, asked for in, in the tax levy because we can only use on so much, so little. But June thirtieth of last year, they broadened the scope and that was a wonderful opportunity for the district to be able to afford to improve on our security. And that is in the form of our alarm systems in our facilities as well as cameras at our facilities. So some of that work was able to be performed during FY twenty-four, but a bigger portion of it's gonna be during this year. And so the maximum that we can get on that is, I think it's point two five percent. And so I just maxed it, knowing that we have a great opportunity to recruit on security district-wide. So that number probably won't be that big moving forward, but knowing that we're able to is, is a huge relief. So and, and what happens in that allocation then is typically the liability fund is where we end up being able to amass as much as possible. Again, it's kind of a narrow fund usage, but of course all our insurance comes out of that. And if you guys look at the budget book and you happen to look at the insurance line and panic, it's, it's terrible. We're all living it, business-wise and personally. Insurance is absolutely scary price right now and it's just gonna go up, especially with the facility and things like that. So being able, having the money in the liability fund to be able to cover that is, is nice. So it just means that the allocation there, you can see from twenty-four to twenty-five, that number went down. And that was, that was one of the line ends that was in relation to this. Okay. So then in the next page, this one is looking at expenditures in a, in a quick snapshot here. And our biggest expenditure obviously is the salaries and if there's anything else in this slide that we're gonna call out. Next slide, we're just talking about kind of what, what things were we.
Go back to contractual services. So that's significant size capital outlay, that's.
It's our second highest one.
Yeah. And so that includes like the, you may say, obviously sort of a cleaning service. What else are we considering in terms of? Stuff like the city.
Back to, thanks.
I think that one that we did is not capital, so you know, pairs.
Basically falls into that bucket. Maybe we literally have two buckets. We have like a supplies and a contractual and that basically the contractual is anything that's gonna involve, we, it's not covered in our capital account.
Ongoing as opposed to one-time expenses.
So the next slide was just giving everybody kind of a high level view of, you know, the things that we talk about and take into consideration while we are creating our budget. And really the highlight of twenty-four, but in the twenty-five is completion of obviously our Urban Health Center, which is a sixty million dollar project. And then I apologize for that, I think I have the right number on the current plan, but it was one point five million or something. Yeah, that's what I did. So, but it, it's just a very large project. It, it overlapped, you know, within FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, but we're, we're looking forward to and excited about getting those things buttoned up. They impact obviously all of our expenditures during those two fiscal periods. Continue to see a hiring challenge and, you know, the district is doing its very, very best to find the best ways to recruit, retain employees, but we still need to, you know, be very mindful, be physically responsible in, in doing that. And I think the, the district has made huge strides in the last two years doing just that, trying to find quality people and the ways to retain them, not people, you know, not revolving door. You know, during budget season, this is forcing us to rethink about our, our expenditures and anticipation of reduced tax monies because our CPI is going down and we don't really see new tax earning, people coming in. So, you know, we have to really think about these as we move forward in our budgets and C P P R two, which is corporate progress tax, that, that is state monies again, and we've been really blessed in the last few years, but that bucket is shrinking as well. So these are all things we have to think about when we're building our budget. Because the goal is to offer new and exciting programs, you know, we're trying to grow revenue. So that's always our focus. And then technology initiatives, taking that into consideration, we just talked about that with the police fund. You know, we were enhancing our security systems. We are revamping our website. This is, you know, to help improve the user experience. We're improving our time and attendance, that's improving employee and employer experience. All things to try to elevate, elevate, elevate. So I think the last picture, yeah, there you go. We just usually talk about what our general fund transfers are. There are different funds are moving monies around, but the general fund is the one who's typically moving the most around. So the two big callouts on this one is the one point oh five oh that is sent over to the bond and that's to cover all of our bond interest payments. And then we are still continuing at board's approval, the fifty thousand dollars to our land acquisition fund. We do that annually and that's to build our future. So those are the highlights. I, we're gonna look at the budget book. I can just tell you that we have our district department goals listed on page five through This is the last year for our strategic plan, so we're gonna be working on, you know, the new one, the next biggest and greatest this year. And then pages twenty-seven through thirty-two, these are all of our tax rate pages you're gonna be talking about, there's a couple of different. We're going to be talking about a couple of different, you know, park district's tax rate, overall tax monies, those pages discuss those and show some historical. We do have on page 33, a rolling history of the assessed values for the organic park districts. We normally kept that at 35, but I think I removed the top one, so I think we've got 37 years actually represented here. Page 34 and 35, this is, this essentially is our sum three that we look at each month of our financial report at our monthly meeting. This just, the page on the left, page 34, is, you know, then grammatically, by graphs and charts, represented on 35. Page 36 and 37, this is essentially sum one and sum two. So sum one is capital, I believe. No, sum one is operating and capital is below it there. And then it's represented by charts and graphs on page 37. Let's see, what else do we have? Oh, well, we just talked about on page 36, the very top line where we're talking about tax monies again. I just wanted to point out that 78.66% of our operating revenue was from property taxes. Second largest fee is at rentals. And if I remember, I think that these numbers were estimated highest last year, I don't know why that's, you are my, but anyway. The largest expenditure was salaries and followed by contractual services. And those are the ones we really just talked about. And then page 38, this is a side-by-side of our budget appropriation ordinance for this year, '24 up inside and '25 operating inside. So it's kind of a lot of the same information, just kind of in a couple of different layouts. Hopefully one interests you. The remaining pages, these are just the individual funds. Page 39 is all funds, 40, capital improvements standalone, 41, district-wide, and then you go into the general fund in detail, rep fund in detail. So kind of broken down by programs. And then in the back, you've got your bond and capital improvements. We've walked around there, I feel like we've talked about the budget a couple of times, so I kind of don't know what to hone in on unless y'all have any specific questions. And with that, if you want to launch it, the center.
Which is action on ordinance 24-05 fiscal year, 24-25 providing budget appropriation. Per state law, annual providing budget appropriation ordinance must be approved and passed before the end of the first quarter of fiscal year. This action appropriates the monies that are necessary to cover the projected expenses and liabilities that district may incur during fiscal year.
I vote to approve ordinance 24-05 providing budget.
That's been approved and seconded. It's what they call the service law.
Aye.
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 And that has passed. Then is where we have action on any old business remotely consent agenda, consent agenda for me. So then we move over to new business, which is action to approve, contract reconciliation fee.
Sure, the board hopefully reviewed the memo that was included in the board packet and the attachment, which had that number, but just as reference, we've been in a longer discussion with Farnsworth over additional fees. We noted way back when we were still in the early, you know, process of the project, that we're working a lot for, so we knew that we probably owed some additional dollars. As the project continued, we began to reconcile and obviously, contractually, I think Farnsworth was able to claim more of the contract, but in our negotiations, really whittled away some things that we felt that were really important to bring out, profits, what was all included, power leads. But the short of it is, we negotiated based on percentage, that we agreed to pay the additional $250,000, you know, of the negotiated arrangements, so that both proved, Farnsworth proved and Urban Park District, both received losses due to the additional work, were able to reconcile on that number. So staff is strongly recommending that we proceed with this, so that we can square up. We agreed that once we reach substantial completion, which is still a little ways out, that we would agree to this. So-
I think I need to answer a question. Because it just seems like, I mean, I read the memo, I looked at the numbers, I just, I don't feel like I have a good understanding of the, and then also thinking about exorbitant overruns. So can you just help us understand, like, what is this in relationship to?
So the contract we signed prior to moving into construction drawings, based upon schematic drawings, schematic estimates prior to COVID, was based upon projected construction cost that was much less than the $13.1 million that we awarded the contract for. And that agreement with Farnsworth had terms that for anything above the initial estimated construction amount, they could claim an additional 6.5%. And so they are, they're contractually entitled to over $30,000. And they came to us and said, you know, we're upside down on this, we'd like to recover some costs, and that's what the negotiations began. We're able to basically negotiate about $8,000, which is considerable. It's still, you know, we're not, we're not actively paying, I think Farnsworth would love to get more if they could, but we, in the end, we thought this was fair.
Going forward, for example, the KRT project with pavilion, they were gins for tons, so basically, he is established, we'll come back to you each time, it's sort of what I'm thinking. It's problematic, but you run a lot of projects that way, it's often, my experience from the board is it's the nickel in the dime, but that's how you keep a running clock. And so you avoid any sort of future, you know, repayments. And just either way, there's, you know, you're never going to be able to, rarely ever will you have, able to capture everything in the first round, things come up and opiate changes and additions. So again, I think in the bigger picture of what they originally wanted to claim, we were able to negotiate a much different number, but it was much more friendly. And also recognize what the park district's losses were in our time, staff time, staff, that we're not able to rebuild somebody else for the additional work that we need. But that was our strongest negotiating point. Look, it cost the district, so we looked at what were the losses and then primarily focused on what would they have been entitled to. And that's where we come back in the, you know, kind of, like, again, yes, they were due, you know, substantial fees and we were able to negotiate what felt more like a real fee for the work that was actually performed. So boxing out, you know, profits or additional numbers of staff hours, we found that was probably the best way to get to this.
And I guess I'm just, I'm struggling to understand how this is designed, right? How COVID plays a role in this? Because we're not using different, are we using different materials that require new design or it just wasn't? Like, I guess I'm trying to understand where did this-
From my perspective, getting, you know, the best prices and lead times and what products were, and materials were actually available and wouldn't cost more later, I think there's a number of years in that scenario of time where there was a lot of havoc. Anybody doing work in that period probably was challenged or on, let's say, the professional side, probably earning, you know, revenue was more challenging, as you, as Derek said, underwater on a lot of projects when you start out in one contractual arrangement, facing all kinds of different situations from the reality side. So in that difference is generally worth the time, the money, and the dollars begin to increase.
Yeah, so it's at the time we entered this contract with Farnsworth pre-COVID, they believed for less than $10 million we could build this facility. And then COVID hit and prices just started escalating very rapidly. And so there was a lot of redesign work that took place.
Okay, that's, because this is about labor costs, so that's where I'm trying to get at, how do we overrun labor, not on materials, which I asked the-
The work continued, we didn't stop and ask to renegotiate a contract or, hey, let's go back, or we could have ended the project, or it's a number of contractual opportunities before, but I think the plan was, we just need to keep moving faster. Remember, we had grants piled in that were kind of be done, they were super accommodating. So earning the money, certainly was obvious, but to what percentage and how it's calculated was the negotiating part. So we began to set for this reasonable number, what would we have paid, could have been that or more, and so our ability to negotiate. What was the most important number for them to receive and how could we recognize the losses and the impact of the district at the same time without going a different direction, involving the door or some other aspect that would likely cost more and start the project down with big time. So, you know, from project management and outcome standpoint, this is a really good place to be. Nobody likes to pay additional fees, other than the contractual early stuff. And if you really start adding up all the benefits and what we've gotten as a result, it's a pretty substantial. And I think it's fair to say that their losses, we seem low, comparable to where the park district and our viewpoint stand.
This exceeds our current contingency.
It does, yeah.
So where are we recommending that come from?
We're still working through our I F and E budget, we think they'll basically margin savings there as well. If combined those aren't enough, we'll be looking at future capital budgets.
I'm very glad to hear that they're going to change, that they're going to use a different way of doing the fee, because the hard part about this is you can't, as a board, you can't make an informed decision that includes additional costs when the costs are going to come at the end.
Right. And I think that, you know, percentage approach, so you're sort of locked in, yeah, it's no matter what, it's just applied. And I think that was a kind of a drawback for the district, you know, we didn't really authorize or have a say-so for people, but by the contract, we're entitled. And so that was our opportunity to, particularly push back and say, yes, contractual, we could claim that, we could go a different direction, but I think the quality of our firm recognized, that was difficult to come. For example, we asked, do you have other clients, of course, who are at various stages of underpayment, overpayment in legal operations. So again, working it out, coming to a real number, looking at it's less than what may have been able to be acquired, one way or another, I think it feels right to the team.
I remember the board commissioners approve of Farnsworth proposed reconciliation fee of $250,000.
Second. That's been moved and seconded. We're going to roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 So that passes. Next is action to create community solar agreements, one and two. Yeah, so we've finalized our purchase agreements with solar for this facility, the new facility. We got good news this week, we cleared all the hamlets, we're ready for a group of construction at this point. Our consultant is recommending we look at community solar, and he's found a community solar field that has capacity for pretty much everything else. And so he's done some analysis and it looks like we would stand to save additional $5,000 in our first year of enrollment. And the good news, this is in addition to savings we're already recognizing through our work with Constellation. So it's in some ways, you have to take anything you do. And it would be a 20-year term. For that 20-year term, if we were to remove a facility from our agreement, options are to create a new facility on. We're building a new trailhead facility, that would be pavilion, that'll have extra use, and so that would be an option to add that to it. If we didn't have the facility add on, our consultant has a pretty wide suite of other clients that are always looking for community solar, he thinks he could fill that gap for us as well. So we recommend that the board commissioners approve solar agreements one and two, pending review by the legal counsel. And that's looking at this, I'm not sure if he doesn't see the concerns, but it's a pretty standard agreement. I talked with Scott Peston, City of Urban, they're in a very similar agreement for community solar, seeking the exact same 10% reduction that we're already recognizing. Are you happy to answer any questions you might have?
Is it just, sorry, so it's a $21,000 the first year and then after that $16,900 is the estimated, or the total?
So this is for the additional $5,000 in annual savings, so this is-
So we're estimating a savings of $21,000 per year, over 20 years?
Yeah, and this is on top of what we're currently saving, about $6,000, $7,000.
I'm a little confused in the section of statement of work. I'm not sure what the fields US has, young one and young two in Newman have to do with that.
So that's where the actual community solar field is.
Right, okay.
So this is, so similar to the community solar array that's going up here down in Park. In the future, it will be levying to that, and discounted power through that. This is one that's already complete and has the need to fill up, to mean it's lots available for community solar. It's in Newman and it happens to be called Young Number One, Young Number Two.
Yes. I think of it as shares that are available, so we're able to, correct me if I'm wrong, but have access to those and benefit from that. Once they're sold out or no capacity, we wouldn't be levying. So the fact that there is capacity allows us to participate in better part of the savings. Appreciate that hard work, that's really an additional savings to us.
Okay. I remember the board commissioners approve of community solar agreements one and two, pending review by the Urban Park District Legal Counsel.
To move to the seconded, we're doing a roll call, we'll start on the floor.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. So then that covers all of our new business. So then I just open the floor to comments from commissioners.
I just want to thank also, just thank Urban Rotary for the working, collaborating with us, being able to provide meals and kids a fantastic opportunity.
It's, yeah, great work that rec staff does that attracts them because they want to help and they see the great work they're doing. Let's just sort of co-sail on their efforts. It's really collaborative, pushing.
I think this makes a big difference. It's a great partnership, so we're really happy to see that.
Well, in that case, I will close the meeting adjourned.
Thanks all.